The mic's on.
I'll get you tomorrow. Yes, I'll try to give you a call tomorrow if you, if you're around. My, my business schedule got. God called me today and I was. He said, she is, she in the hospital. I said, Mike Drury's hospital.
Good evening, citizens and fellow board members. At this time, we're gonna have our invocation by Reverend Darrell Rawlings.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Amen. Let us pray. Father God, in the precious name of Jesus, we thank you for this day, oh God, one which we have never seen before, oh God, and one we shall never see again. And because of that, oh God, let us make it a day to remember. And not because of the differences, oh Lord, that may be encountered tonight, but because we understand that although we may disagree, we are still striving to achieve the same outcome. And that outcome is one to be united on one accord, oh God. Thank you right now, oh God, for traveling mercies tonight. I ask right now, oh Lord, that you would bless this board, bless our administrator, oh God, and our administrative team. And bless everyone right now, Lord, under the sound of my voice tonight, oh God. Right now, Lord, I ask you would bind us together right now with, with cords that cannot be broken, oh God. And let us be reminded that life and death lies in the power of the tongue. So tonight, Lord, bridle our tongues, oh God, and allow room for patience and for kindness and understanding. You said in your word, oh God, that a gentle answer turns away wrath, but a harsh word stirs up anger. So right now, have your way in this place tonight, oh God. Father, right now, I ask that you would bind us, oh Lord, and allow us to work together as one team, oh God. And so I ask that you would bless us now, oh God, and we shall be blessed. Keep us and we shall be kept. And your name will get all the honor, all the glory, and all the praise. For it's in Jesus Christ's name we pray. Thank God. Amen.
Thank you, Reverend Rawlings. Board members, at this time, we're calling the meeting to order. And first, we will have our moment of silence. Thank you. Let's stand and do the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Board members, we have our agenda for tonight that needs to be adopted. Can I have a motion, please, for adoption of the agenda?
It's been moved.
It's been moved second.
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor, let it be known by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Aye. Nays. Hearin' none. Agenda is adopted. At this time, the county administration will enumerate our consent items.
Yes. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, and members of the, of the audience assembled. There are several consent items, board members, for your consideration this evening. First, you have the approval of the draft minutes from April the 7th, 2022. We have approval of our accounts payable for the month of March in the amount of $645,561. There's a request for a public hearing on the six-year secondary road improvement plan. That is for June the 2nd, 2022. There is another request for a public hearing for the metacourt trust demolition of a structure that's pertaining to historic preservation district. That public hearing has to be on June the 2nd, 2022 also. There's a resolution recognizing Farmer Joe's Greenhouse for their dedicated years of service as a business in Surrey County. And there is a proclamation for Public Police Week 2022 from our sheriff's office. And lastly, there is a request, board members, to continue the public hearing for Lob Lolly Solar until June the 16th at 7:00 PM or shortly after. That concludes the consent items for your consideration.
Board members, you've heard the consent items. Is there anything you would like to have pulled or have more discussion? Okay, hearin' none. Motion to approve the consent items.
Madam Chair, move that we would approve the consent items presented to us tonight, one through seven.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
They moved in second. All in favor, let it be known by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Aye. Nays. Hearin' none. As have the, it's been adopted. Thank you, board members. Reports, Blackwater Regional Library, April 2022 activity report. I think that's just in a.
For your information, yes.
We will move on to county administrators' report. Ms. Rawlings.
Yes, Madam Chair. Good evening again. Just a few items for the county administrators' update on this evening. First, board members, I do want to take the opportunity to publicly thank all citizens and citizens groups who participated in the April cleanup county month. I know that the towns had their own separate activities, so we do want to recognize those who took the time to make sure that Surrey remains little free. So we do appreciate all of those efforts from all who participated. Also, there is a special appreciation again to our Solid Waste staff who, at this particular time of year, does have to work extra hard in those endeavors for cleanup county month. Also, to advise that we have ordered the new signs for all of our sites, advertising what citizens can and cannot take to the Solid Waste site. So we hope to have those erected within the next two weeks. Just a couple of project updates for you. If you have the opportunity to go to the animal shelter, we encourage you to do so. It looks great with the upgrades that have happened. I can tell you that I know our sheriff is happy. The animal control officers are probably happy. The project manager is certainly happy. And from our tour, I know that the animals are happy also. So we certainly glad that those renovations have taken place. It is very bright and it's very airy, and they did a great job with that. Just a brief update on our radio communications projects. We have meetings that are scheduled upcoming with our consultant and with Motorola, the vendor that we selected. The board at your previous meeting did give us authorization to start negotiations with that firm, so we get ready to have those meetings and hopefully to bring Motorola and the contract to you for a presentation at a future meeting of the board. I know that we have not had a lot of conversations later on COVID, but I just wanted to provide you all with the statistics as it relates to our vaccination rates from the Crater Health District. Surrey County has about 62.9, almost 63% of our citizens who have been fully vaccinated. And we are second to Prince George County for those localities that are in the Crater Health District. That's just for your information. At the Monday's meeting, board members, you had the opportunity to hear the county administrators' proposed budget for 2022, 2023. And I want to just briefly mention the remaining of the budget schedule for the citizens who are assembled. On next Thursday, the public hearing is scheduled for the 2223 proposed budget. And on the 19th, if it's the board's desire, at that time to continue the meeting to 6 o'clock for a work session, if desired. But other than that, the scheduled action for the budget is scheduled for May 19th at 7:00. As well to adopt the budget, set the tax rates, and adopt the budget resolutions for the upcoming fiscal year. I do want to advise again, the citizens, that we, the board, supervisors, will love to receive your comments on the proposed budget. They can be mailed to the county administrators' office at the address 45 School Street. And also, you can go to our website. It is very easy to see that the budget information is made available at Surrey, excuse me, at surycountervia.gov, pardon me, our website for you to see that budget information. Copies of the proposed budget in physical form are also made available in the county administrators' office at the government center. And as stated at the Monday's meeting, we've made those copies available in both libraries, Chairman Little and members of the board. Okay. And as it pertains to the budget, obviously, the budget document has a lot of narrative information. We do encourage citizens to, to take a look at the information, but also sometimes it's a lot to navigate through. So I always encourage citizens to actually pay a lot of attention to the transmittal letter that's in the budget document. It's about five pages. And it gives a very good summation of the dynamics of the budget. So if you want to kind of hone in on that information first, I think it's a great opportunity to kind of find out exactly what's happening in the budget in such time you get an opportunity to look at much later in all the details of the budget document. And board members, I do have the transmittal letter, and I make sure that you get a physical copy of that. But this is the document in its entirety. It's available on our website. And of course, those few pages that I just referenced in the transmittal are in here, and you can easily see those pages, 21 through 25. Okay. On this past Wednesday, board members had the opportunity to attend the Hampton Roads Planning District Commission meeting. And obviously, at those meetings, yesterday was a, was an excellent meeting because it really kind of honed in on a lot of the strategic priorities that you, as a board, have been discussing over the last past year. One of the things that they talked about was the actual transportation projects and the strategic priority as pertains to access across the James River. So Surrey has an opportunity to be very participatory and to be able to submit any transportation projects for consideration in the Hampton Roads PTO transportation plan, which is slated to, I believe, the year is 2045. Seems like a long time, but when you talk about those huge transportation projects like roads and bridges and bike trails and, and all of that alike, Mr. Calhoun, it takes a long time for those things to come to fruition. So we do have an opportunity to maybe to have a, a dialogue and to be a part of those discussions. At a previous meeting, board members, I brought to your attention an item that they are saying, and I'm saying they, but we should also be saying it as well, that we should not sleep on as a county. You all do know that the wind tunnels, as pertains to Dominion Energy and the fact that they have built those turbines 27 miles off the coast of Virginia Beach. And one of the things that they talked about on yesterday was the realism approach to that. Obviously, there is a talent pipeline that's missing. There's about 5,000 jobs that's going to be made available from the construction of that project. When you're talking about, I believe, the number, don't want to quote it, but it's hundreds of those turbines that would be built. And obviously, they need place and they need people to be able to build all the parts. So they talked collectively how all these cities and counties in the Hampton Roads District really need to pay a part in that. Obviously, they talked about schools, and they talked about the fact that, you know, we have CTE programs, and those schools are bringing their CTE students to see the plant where they will be built. They actually doing tours to see the wind turbines because we really have to recognize that there is a need for a workforce. And because we are part of the Hampton Roads region, we need to really be involved in those conversations. And we have a direct line where we can share this information with the school superintendent as well to be able to make sure that we are part of those conversations as pertains to what we can do to help with that talent pipeline that's going to be needed for that project. So there is opportunity, a lot of opportunity as pertains to that project for the surrounding localities. And hopefully, the executive director, Mr. Crum, hopefully he'll have the opportunity to, you know, come before the board and talk more about these relevant issues for Surrey County. Okay. Just a brief note on this afternoon, the Riverside Regional Jail. I don't talk to you all about the regional jail that much publicly, but one of the things that I did want to mention this afternoon, they did go through a audit process, and I can tell you that it's always refreshing when you belong to an Aegis in an organization where you can sit through a meeting and hear nothing but great things. Obviously, I think I shared with you all before that, obviously, there were some issues last year or a year before with the jail, and they have really worked hard through rectifying those issues. And of hundreds and hundreds of standards that the jail has to go through, they passed with flying colors, meaning 100% corrective action for the things that had to be corrected and be able to give full satisfaction for all those standards that had to meet. So. Budget-related, as pertains to Riverside Regional Jail, I think we reported in our budget document that our costs actually did decrease because of the amount of care of, of the prisoners increased, decreased for Surrey County. But on this afternoon, the finance committee made a recommendation to the board that they increased the per jail, per dim from $50 per day to $51.50 per day. And that's basically to accommodate a 5% salary increase for jail employees. They, like everybody else, is on this talent and, and competition for employees. And because the neighboring jurisdictions to them are offering 10% salary increases and 10% on top of salaries incentives, they felt it was necessary to at least build in a 5% salary increase for their employees. The cost of Surrey County because of our population is minimum. So when we do make revisions to our budget, we're going to be increasing that request for about $7,000. Okay. And board members, I want to say that concludes my report for this evening.
All right. Thank you.
Short and sweet.
A lot of information.
Lot of information, yes.
Didn't take you long, and we appreciate it. And as you state, it's good not to have any issues that we have any large concerns about. Things seem to be moving along for both Surrey County and its communities around us, and so we're.
Absolutely, Madam Chair. I apologize, Madam Chair. And, and secondly, I didn't mention, because it's on here, is the primary and secretary route mow, trim, litter removal for Surrey County. So the Department of Transportation, VDOT, submitted this information. You have it for you. And it kind of shows the schedule of when they're doing that secondary road maintenance. At the June meeting, when we do have the public hearing on the secondary improvement plan, Mr. Carroll will be here to do his regular quarterly report also. So you'll hear more information. You know there's paving along Route 10 that's being conducted right now as we speak as well.
I'm taking a detour.
Absolutely.
Yes, indeed. I'm sure other citizens are too, that travel in that arena.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, well, thank you. Board members, are there any other, are there any questions of the county administrator on any of the report?
Just, just one, Ms. Rawlings, could you just inform the public of the public hearings that are, because tonight, we delayed several public hearings. I know we've got a meeting in June.
Yes.
The public hearings in June, the two meetings, if you could, if you could.
I can. And if I'm, I'm going to ask Mr. Harrison to let me know if I missed anything, but at the June 2nd meeting, we will have, in addition to the two that I just mentioned, which is the public hearing on the secondary road improvement plan and the public hearing on the historic preservation district, a demolition of a historic structure. There is the line renewable energy project, which we will have that on the June 2nd meeting. And is there a, another one that I'm missing, Mr. Harrison?
No, ma'am, you're.
And I got it. Okay, so we will have those three.
And, and for the 16th?
And for the 16th, yes. We will have the Lob Lolly Solar public hearing. That would be on June the 16th. Okay.
Madam Chair, if I could get a clarification. Last meeting, we had, or maybe it was even two meetings, I believe it was the last meeting, we had tabled, I call it the Bacon's Castle Solar into the first meeting in June. I didn't hear that one.
Okay, for that one, I can double-check, Mr. Drury, but I think for that one, it wasn't, it wasn't, it's not a public hearing, it's just action for the board to be able to discuss it. So it's not a public hearing. It's just action for the board to be able to discuss it. So I, it is, it's, it's a discussion item for the board, so it's not.
Understanding. I didn't ask the question right. Just a, a public interest, that's a pretty big one, too. So just wanted the public to know that, and thanks.
Okay, gotcha.
Right.
Absolutely. Yes. And you're, I should have mentioned that one as well, so right, it's, it's correct. It's the, the board is scheduled to have some action on that, but that's not anticipated for June 2nd because of the, the load of the agenda. Okay.
All right. Any other questions, comments on the administration's report? Okay, if not, we don't have to have enough motion or anything on that report. We will move this, at this time, public comments. Okay. At this time, we will open the floor for public comments, and this is a time for your comments. We appreciate your, your hurring to comments. And also, when you come up, give us your name and your district, please. Thank you. First, whoever wants to come up, speak on the public comments.
Mike in Ecclestone, Denver, in Blackwater District. I've noticed some improvements in the Denver dump site, a lot of improvement. My question is, where are you having a science print in Red China? It's been quite some time, you know, but overall, it's an improvement. Keep going. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ecclestone. And again, public comment time is not a time really to ask your questions. Okay, thank you. But we, we noted your, your question, Mr. Ecclestone.
Good evening, Madam Chairman.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
How are you doing?
I'm fine.
Great. Thank you for your service. In January, I raised a concern about getting a permit for the construction of a solar array at our home. It took over six weeks to get the permit. At the end of March, they completed the erection of the array, but I could not turn it on for three additional weeks that it took. The inspection report to get from the inspection to Prince George for them to authorize me to energize the array. I don't understand why it took six weeks to get the authorization and then an additional 22 days to turn it on. Something needs to be done with the permit process and inspection process. Excuse me, I got a cold.
That's okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I, Enchik, from the Surrey District. I realize that we have a public hearing on the budget coming up, but I have read the documents, some of it. There's a lot to read. But I did want to express that I feel like that we may not be able to afford the proposed budget, and so we should rethink some things. We've just gone through the assessment, and everybody's homes went up. So I would like for consideration to be given to take the tax rate back to 71 cents and think about that the recommendation for a full-time attorney should probably be reconsidered. Usually, those type of services in the government are contracted. That way, you're able to get a variety of skills, which I know our county's going to need in the upcoming years with things like solar farms and easements. And also, as much as it would be great to give the employees a 5% raise, I think that we should give our new personnel lady a chance to get it, settle in and, and work with Melissa with the staff to come up with proposed way to give good raises to people when they excel. Sometimes you can have discontent when everybody gets the same raise, and we all know, we all work differently. So I think that we should rethink a 5% raise right now. That should be considered in these discussions. And so, thank you for listening.
I see the county administrator writing, so she's taking your notes. Anyone else? Thank those of you who have spoken. And at this time, if no one else wants to speak during public comment period, we will close public comment. Thank you. Board comments, we need to acknowledge, I will go first, if that's okay. Okay. Tonight, we need to acknowledge the resignation of our attorneys, Heftin Wally, as our legal counsel. And that resignation is effective of June the 30th of this year. So we do need to have discussion on how we will move forward, as Mr. Drury suggested, as to how we will go forth advertising. Any discussions or other things that we need to discuss, board members? Mr. Elliott.
Just on your last information about the resignation of counsel, that goes in effect on what, June 30th?
June 30th.
So that's giving us a short turnaround to acquire legal counsel. Do we have a, an appointed time when the board will bring this up for discussion?
We do not, as I know of. But it is, I think it's a time.
Yeah, it's.
Tonight is good as any, yes.
Well, since, just, just my, my opinion, if we only have roughly a month and a half, a little month and a half before we no longer have legal counsel, I think there's something that needs to come to the forefront. I think we'd be derelict of our duty if we don't secure legal counsel with all the matters we have coming up before us. So I believe that this is something that should draw our attention as soon as possible.
Mr. Drury?
Just to follow up on that, and I got one other thing, is that, of course, y'all know, and most of the citizens know here, that I do local government law and assisting Denwoodie County at this, mainly at the present time is the main client. There's an association called the Local Government Attorneys Association that we can use. And I, I personally know the folks in that organization, and there are a lot of, lot of attorneys I've had that would do interim work. So I don't, I think we can do it fairly quickly when we make a decision as into the process that we want to, to pursue. So, so just, just letting y'all know, there's a interim process that can be. And it's probably five or six attorneys here in southeastern Virginia that Mike could help out. So, so anyway, but I'm welcome to discussion whenever the board wants to.
I know, since we knew this before the discussion tonight, the staff worked up a job description for an attorney. So I'll discuss that in a minute. Mr. Calhoun?
At this time, I have no question, no comments. Thank you.
Okay, but you do feel like it's something that we need to.
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely.
Look into and move forward with, because I would not want us to be without. Look into and move forward with, because I would not want us to be without legal counsel.
Exactly.
Madam Chair, I have one more, more comment. And just, I just want to thank administration staff for the tarp. I'm not sure, I call it a blue tarp, on the old, I think it was the, I'm not sure whether it was the Commissioner's revenues or Treasurer's old office that sit behind the courthouse. Citizens that were concerned about that old building, appreciate it, and thanks.
I think it was the Commissioner's or the Clerk, one of the others. Yeah, over the years, it has become worse, of course, because boards could not decide what they wanted to do with the building. So, I hope this board will decide that, one way or the other, we're going to fix it or we will take it down because it's costing money to try to just keep keeping it up and not finishing the work on it.
And that's it, Madam Chair.
Okay. All right. At this time, I would ask our attorney to give them, read the motion to enter into closed session, please.
Sure. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Before I make the motion to go into closed session, I would just like to let the board know that, yes, the anticipated end of the contract would be June thirtieth, but in the event that the board can't find another counsel before then, the firm could stay on for a little bit longer.
Thank you, we appreciate that. Thank you.
So, I asked for a motion to go into closed session under two point two thirty-seven eleven A one to discuss applications for appointment, to appoint an individual to the border supervisors to represent the Carsley District due to the resignation of Mr. Howell.
Thank you. Board members, you've heard the motion. Can we have a motion to go into closed session?
So moved.
It's been moved. Do we have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. All of those that agree, please let it be known in the best sound of aye. Aye, nays, hearing none. We will move into closed session.